Mayor McCaffrey?
Here.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Here.
Councillor Tabor?
Here.
Councillor Denton?
Here.
Councillor Moreau?
Here.
Councillor Bagley?
Here.
Councillor Lombardi?
Here.
Councillor Blaylock?
Here.
Councillor Cook?
Here.
Thank you, Kelly. On to the invocation. There are two people that passed recently in the city of Portsmouth that just like to take a moment of silence to remember them.
Thank you.
The first is Frank McLean of Portsmouth for the last, I think, 44 years. He leaves behind his wife Ruth and sons Jeff and Mike, who Rich and I went to school with. Our condolences go out to your loss. Also Sheldon Crasker, who was born in Portsmouth 94 years ago, went to Portsmouth High, was a led the Portsmouth Paper Company, involved in many activities, pillar of the community. He leaves behind his wife Elaine and after celebrating 75 years of marriage, and our thoughts and prayers go out to her in this time. Please rise and join in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is the acceptance of minutes, and there are no minutes for this evening, so going to move right along. Same for recognitions and volunteer volunteer committee reports. There is nothing at the the current meeting. And so with that, we're going to move to public comment. I have the signups here. I'll call them up. And if there's anybody on Zoom, please raise your hand right now. It's not going to be a it won't be an issue tonight. But if there's ever many folks that are signing up, we're going to try to make sure we understand how many people are speaking in advance so we can adjust the time accordingly. But with that, we have Sean Maloney. If you would rise and state your piece, you're speaking tonight on the mask mandate. And if you could just state your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. Hello, my name is Sean Maloney. I was born and raised in Portsmouth. I live at 570 Union Street. I was actually born in this building back when it was still the hospital. So hello. This is my first time seeing all you, the new councillors. Congratulations on everyone who got elected. Congratulations on everyone who got reelected. Again, Sean Maloney, born and live at 570 Union Street right now. I served 14 years in the military as a SEAL medic. I got out in 2019. My qualifications as a SOF medic allows me to perform a large range array of procedures, including minor surgeries. I'm currently a National Registry Paramedic as well. The joke is, once you get out of the military, your scope increases, or I'm sorry, decreases. It goes from about 100 to about a 10. Thanks to COVID and me serving in New York City at Presbyterian Columbia, mine went from about 100 to about 150. In 2020, because of my background, I was hired to work in a COVID ward at Presbyterian Columbia. And it's a hospital in New York City called Riverview Terrace. It was a converted conference room. This is our shirt, all the travel doctors. We call it the social club. We all worked. It was a converted conference room. I had over 100 COVID patients. It was all former military medics, travel doctors, travel nurses. I had over 100 COVID patients I was personally responsible for. My duties with them included formulating, executing treatment plans, ordering and interpreting blood gas and lab reports, as well as monitoring their day to day and minute to minute needs. I was performing the role of doctor, nurse, and medic all in one. I did this from April to June in 2020. I am here to respectfully request that the council revoke the mask mandate in Portsmouth. I believe that each individual should be allowed to make his or her own decision when it comes to their health. When it comes to that, I also believe if they own a business and want people to wear a mask inside, that that should be completely respected as well, each individual business. But it should be left to the individual and the individual business owners, not the government. If full revocation is not an option, I ask for an adjustment. According to the CDC, 94% of people who died of COVID had at least two comorbidities, 75% had at least four. 80% were above the age of 65, and 80% were roughly obese. If mask mandate is considered mandatory, I would ask that it be adjusted only to apply with those at the utmost risk categories, two or more comorbidities above the age of 65, or the obese. Before anyone starts saying the masks, the masks are giving it to the at rest, please let us remember it is not 2020. We know much more now. We have vaccines. We have boosters. Again, many people, even when the mask mandate was removed, they were still wearing their masks, which they should be allowed to do and not be harassed for. When I was working in Presbyterian Columbia, the first two weeks of May 2020, almost 80% of our patient intake were people under the strictest social distancing, mask masking, and isolation guidelines. They were still in the hospital, and they still, most of them also filled every category I just mentioned. In closing, I ask you to remember that the current variant is not nearly as lethal.
Oh, you can, you can.
I'm finishing up right now. I apologize. The original worldwide survivability rate was approximately 99.998. We know what COVID is now. People are aware of it. We have vaccines and boosters and masks. Should the individual choose to have them, we cannot play the game of every flu season expecting more mandates. Let me skip to the end here. The average person fights off the regular flu eight to 12 times a year. If we tested for regular flu as much as we test for COVID, we would have hundreds of millions of cases every year. I'll just end with some questions. If mask mandates work so well, why are we doing another one? If mask mandates don't work, why are we doing another one? Please allow us to make our own decisions. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I apologize for going over time.
That's quite all right, Sean. Thank you so much for your comments here tonight. And personally, I want to thank you for your service to the country and making Portsmouth proud. Please enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all.
Is there anyone on Zoom?
There are no hands on Zoom, Mayor.
All right. So next, we have the public dialogue summary. We're going to, as part of the council rules, discuss at the next meeting, public dialogue and how that's going to move forward and what shape that's going to take. But we don't have that, nor have we had that during COVID. And then up is the public hearings and vote on ordinance and or resolutions. And we have the first reading of ordinance, amending Chapter 3, Article 11, Section 3 dot 1101 dash 3 dot 1104, face coverings during the COVID-19 pandemic. A sample motion would be to move to pass first reading and schedule a public hearing and second reading at the February 7th City Council meeting.
Your Honor, I moved to pass first reading and schedule a public hearing and second reading at the February 7th, 2022 City Council meeting.
Second.
First and foremost, thank you to city staff for quickly taking the old ordinance and updating it to include what the current mandate entails. And if anyone wants to make any adjustments to it, we still can. This is just first reading. From experience, my recommendation would be let city staff know in advance what you might be considering. For example, there are a couple items in the current mandate that exists that are not listed here. I understand why they're not, why they're no longer in this, because we've learned more since Omicron started. But there were things like performers being allowed to not wear a mask. So this is just first reading. We're still going to have second reading. If this moves forward, we'll have another public hearing, and then there'll be a third reading after that. But just give some consideration to things which you may want to change to it, is all I ask.
Oh, Councillor Moreau.
I'm just hoping that before or at our next meeting, if we could just get the updated numbers before we have that public hearing, so that we know exactly where things have been since this first started and where it will be at that point. It would be very helpful.
And is that something that we have? Do we have the updated dashboard tonight or no? I'm looking at.
We do. We do, Your Honor. The numbers have come down rather dramatically, but we don't have, we did not publish it to the staff. I'm sorry, to the council staff saw this for the first time at about 5:30. Our health officer, Kim McNamara, is here. Perhaps she can speak to it. But I can tell you, there's been a decrease down from the high 20s to the high teens in terms of percent positivity in Portsmouth proper.
Okay. Any other comments on this? Councillor Blaylock?
Thank you, Your Honor. And I'd just like to, it's nice to see these numbers going down in the teens. But for those at home, and I just, I want to, I believe the health officer recommended last meeting that those numbers want to get down to 8%. I know that's what schools, I know that's what, that's kind of been the number. And I also want to remind people that a lot of people are home testing. So those, this teens number is probably really higher. But it is good to see these numbers dropping, and encourage everyone to stay safe and keep these numbers dropping.
Any other comments to council? Councillor Tabor?
Yes, Your Honor. I'm glad to see that we put an end date on this mask ordinance of April 1. That was a difficulty when we did a mask ordinance the last time, because it took weeks to undo the mask ordinance. So I think that was a really smart move. It makes this a preventive measure, but a preventive measure with an end in sight.
Thank you, our Councillor Tabor. Any other comments? I have one, and I'll pass the gavel to the Assistant Mayor. So I do like that there's an effective date of an end date. I wonder if there's a possibility to have a shorter than a April 1. That could take into account many different things of, you know, when this is passed. I'm wondering if it's possible through an ordinance to have it align with recommendations of the health officer, use a number. It was a frustrating position to be when it clearly was no longer necessary and still have a process to get through. That's one. Two, it's, we'll pass first reading tonight, or likely based on the comments thusforth. This is an effort to make the council, to solve some of the questions that we heard when the the health director made, to back up, so to speak, the health director, but also to clarify the legality of a mask mandate. Because while I believe that the health director was in a right to require that, questions in the community arose. And, you know, this is a belt and suspenders, to steal our city attorney's phrase, to make sure that we're keeping our pants up on this. So I'm fine with that. I just want it to be as as easy as to remove, because there is a chance, given maybe the numbers that we shared tonight, the numbers that we see through Massachusetts, that we might not have a chance to actually enact this ordinance, because the numbers might drop so precipitously that it becomes a moot point. And in that case, I would hope that we would table a future reading of this and not go forth with the mask mandate. But as of right now, I am inclined to support this, to bring that forth to the public hearing, where, you know, folks like Sean can come up and again, speak to that at the public hearing. But we need to pass this reading or this reading of that in order to to create that.
Now, to speak to the April 1 date, I had recommended that date solely based on that being the day that outdoor dining began last season, and that's all that date was. So I am more than open to that date being changed at some point, whether it be amendment tonight, amendment at second reading if we get there.
I don't have the gavel anymore. I'll take it back. Councillor Moreau.
I think we should be very conscientious. If it's easier to extend versus stop, because you're talking about how long it took to stop it, maybe we pick a shorter date and have the ability then extend by 30 days. I don't know legally, and I certainly asked the city attorney what would be the easiest thing to do. I just think we should be conscientious and give ourselves the most flexibility.
Short answer, Your Honor. It's easier to stop than it is to extend. An extension requires an amendment to the ordinance. We actually can stop it the way we did last time by relaxing enforcement done in the direction of the city manager. So.
Councillor Cook?
Can I get a point of clarification? When we talk about dropping below 8%, we're talking about dropping from high to medium transmission. Is that correct? Dropping below the high transmission rate?
Could we ask the health officer to weigh in, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, that's correct. You're looking to go from substantial down to the moderate level, which is when it's considered to be safer. You're also correct that it's not just a percentage. We use that because it matches with the schools. It would lessen confusion. But we're also looking at hospitalizations and death rates. And the hospitalizations, all three hospitals locally are still on surge today. They're still suffering with some work shortages. There's been some improvement in some areas and some bump ups in numbers we don't like to see. But the overall trend isn't going in the right direction. And we're keeping an eye on all three of those metrics.
Thanks, Kim.
Follow up, Councillor Cook?
I think I'd like to offer a motion to amend, if I can. The effective date at the end, the ordinance shall take effect immediately and shall terminate on April 1st, 2022, or until transmission drops to a moderate level, with enforcement discretion to be determined by the Health Department.
Your Honor, should I just clarify? To amend an ordinance at first reading requires a suspension of the rules first. To amend the ordinance at second reading is a simple majority vote and a motion. So.
Okay. Councillor Cook, do you want to rescind your amendment, and we'll bring it forth at the the second reading?
Absolutely.
All right. Well, I will. I appreciate everybody that has reached out to us on this, and I appreciate regardless of whether or not you agree with the motion, I can't stress enough how appreciative I am as the mayor of how respectful everybody has been. I think that's a testimony to the character of Portsmouth, that we can disagree politely on these issues. And I've had some very cordial conversations with folks on this. And again, patience as we move through this latest and hopefully last wave. I feel optimistic if we got the coming weeks, and I hope that folks in the community do too. I know that this is incredibly stressful to everyone. That's not lost on me. But with that, we will call, have a roll call vote to pass first reading. Noting that there are three readings that need to be passed for this to go into effect.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Councillor Tabor?
Yes.
Councillor Denton?
Yes.
Councillor Moreau?
Yes.
Councillor Bagley?
Yes.
Councillor Lombardi?
Yes.
Councillor Blaylock?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCaffrey?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Thank you. Moving on to the rest of the agenda, under my name, we have a few resignations, and then some appointments to be considered. First, the resignation, we will accept a sample motion to accept with regret the resignations of Andrew Simonas from the Conservation Committee, Peter McDonnell, and Chase Hagerman from the Zoning Board of Adjustment, and that a letter with thanks for their service to the community be sent.
So moved.
Second.
And just briefly, Andrew is, he's continuing to serve the city in a different way. So excited about, excited about that. Both Peter and Chase have served on the zoning board of adjustment for many years. To do so requires an incredible amount of commitment, time for something that most residents of Portsmouth, unless you're going before them, don't know how much work that actually goes into that. It is truly a Herculean effort that they put in, both knowing the zoning laws, knowing that those laws are going to be challenged if they get them wrong in court, and and doing some things that are difficult to to really step up and do, help neighbors coexist with one another in a friendly neighborly way while providing a process. I really just want to take the time to publicly thank them in addition to this letter for all of the work that they have committed to the city. And we wish them all the best in their future endeavors, and hopefully one day have them come back and serve the city in another capacity. So with that, we will call the vote. I guess we have a sample motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have to do roll call because one member's on Zoom, Kelly?
Oh, my, no way. We do?
I don't think so. Do we have to, Bob? It would be if there wasn't a quorum present.
I take Kelly's advice on this. All in favor?
Aye.
So I have also appointments to be considered. Jason Hewitt to the Cable Television Communications Committee, Chris Benick to the Cemetery Committee, Eva Boch to the Cemetery Committee, Dee Forte to the Cemetery Committee, Mike Griffin to the Cemetery Committee, John Margeson to the Cemetery Committee, Sue Palladore to the Cemetery Committee, Carrie Rubenstein to the Cemetery Committee, Susan Stary to the Cemetery Committee, Stephen DeTrelio to the Sustainable Practice Blue Ribbon Committee, and Jay Lieberman to the Sustainable Practice Blue Ribbon Committee. These are all appointments to be considered. They will be voted on at the next council meeting. If there's any questions on those appointments, please reach out to me. And there is a list on City Hall for anybody that looks, want to serve. It will also be going into the upcoming paper on opportunities to do so. Third on the list is the approval of the City Council Rules and Orders. A sample motion to move to approve the City Council Rules and Orders as presented and refer to the legal department to draft a revised set of rules and orders incorporating modifications by the City Council to bring back for a vote at the February 7th, 2002 City Council meeting.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
There are some changes that we would like to make on these. Tonight's not the night to do those. Tonight's the night to get some rules. And then we're going to, we're going to amend those rules. The city attorney has has shared some of those suggestions along with the city clerk with me. They will be distributed, and we will have a conversation at the next council meeting on how to amend them. But tonight, we need to simply adopt the current rules that we have. So is this a need a roll call vote?
Does not need a roll call.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And then we have the ratification of City Council policies. Bob, is there anything I'm missing that we need to do on the ratification of City Council policies?
Just need to approve what is before you as presented, unless there's a policy that you want to pull out.
So I'd be looking for a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Second. Is there anybody that would like to? All in favor?
Aye.
Your Honor, I would like to suspend the rules to bring forward item 13C, which for everyone's knowledge is Councillor Bagley's proposed policy.
Yep. So we'll need to suspend the rules. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Councillor Bagley, would you like to speak to your religious holiday policy?
Yes. So in the packet, which I'm trying to draw, pull up right now, because I don't have the language in front of me, and it's not coming up on my phone. Councillor Denton, do you have the language in front of you that you could read?
I can in a moment.
Apologies. And I'll also take this moment to say that, because I didn't at the roll call vote, that I'm at the Pickwick Hotel in San Francisco, and I am alone in the room.
Thank you, Councillor Bagley. Let's see, where is his?
It's page 101. Unfortunately, I'm using the device that.
Okay.
I have it.
All right. The Assistant Mayor has it.
I have it. Whereas the city of Portsmouth takes pride being the city of the open door, welcoming people of all genders, races, religion, and whereas the city of Portsmouth currently does not hold any meetings on federal holidays, New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Jr. Day, President's Day, Memorial Day, Juneteenth, Independence Day, Labor Day, Columbus Day, also observed as Indigenous Peoples' Day, Veterans' Day, Thanksgiving, and Christmas Day. Now, therefore, the City Council adopts this religious holiday policy to discourage the city of Portsmouth from holding any meetings on commonly accepted religious holidays, such as Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur, whereas the tenants of the of a resident's religious religion prohibits attending meetings on such a day and requires their attendance at religious services.
Thank you, Assistant Mayor. Any conversation on this? If not? Oh, Councillor Bagley, yes.
Yeah, I just want to speak briefly to this and how it came about. Last year, there was a public meeting on the Beverly Hill sidewalks, and it happened to occur, I believe, on Yom Kippur. A resident reached out to me and said that, you know, it seems every year there seems to be a meeting on either, I don't know, Yom Kippur, that she would like to attend or speak publicly and is unable to because of the tenants of her religion. So what I did is I reached out to Rav Bakaya at Temple Beth Israel and asked her if she would be in support of such a policy. And it was a resounding yes. And then I also reached out to several residents in town that I know personally of the Jewish faith. And they all said that they would very much be in support of a policy such as this. So and the feedback I got was, not only would we be in support of a policy such as this, but if there are other religions in town, you know, that would want to be considered for for a day or two a year where we don't have public meetings, so that they can honor their religion, we should, we should be inclusive with them as well. I wanted to start particularly with these two holidays. As many of you know, Temple Beth Israel, which was founded in 1910, is the oldest permanent house of Jewish worship in the state of New Hampshire. So I think it's a long past time for us to recognize that and and to do this, I think, small gesture to to making people feel more included and instead of excluded. And just for a data point, there are over 300 families on the seacoast that regularly attend services there. So it's, it's not an insignificant portion of the population that this policy would affect. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Bagley. Any other comments? Assistant Mayor?
I absolutely support this, and I support us trying to be more inclusive of everyone on the seacoast. I would ask city, the city manager and city staff to maybe develop some type of intake form for people who want to submit a holiday, you know, that we, that this would fall under that policy. policy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we need a roll call vote on that?
No, it's just, that was just the, we didn't actually move the policy.
No, we didn't.
We suspended the rule.
Oh.
Oh, that's right.
Motion that we adopt the religious holiday policy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next, some excitement. The Ethics Committee drawing by lot.
Let's see, do we...
That was the ratification.
Do we ratify all, we have to ratify all the policies first.
Did we not, when, I thought we did because we had the conversation on whether or not we...
A for, yes, we did. Sorry, I was busy making my...
I was just excited to draw this by lot.
Yes.
Phone out of the hat.
Actually, it's a folder.
It's a folder, okay.
Sorry, I forgot my little basket tonight. Bob, would you like to draw them?
Oh, I absolutely do not want to draw them. It's going to be me.
One. Thank you. Council Moreau?
All right.
What were you looking at?
All right. The Board and Commission assignments, I will announce and read through these. It's never easy to make decisions, and appreciate everybody's patience in this process, and was looking forward to doing this based on folks' first preference. Ultimately, there's a lot of work that we have to do in the city and a lot of work that's not mentioned in these committees that we will soon be bringing forward, but this is a start. So on the Audit Committee, we have Councilor John Tabor and Councilor Kate Cook. And I have these listed as both. So I'm going to read through both Commissions and the Mayor, or the Blue Ribbon Committees as well. African Burying, Ground Stewardship Blue Ribbon Committee, the Assistant Mayor, Joe Kelly. Our Chamber of Commerce Liaison, doing some work out in the city of San Francisco tonight, Councilor Andrew Bagley. For EDC, we have Assistant Mayor Joe Kelly and Councilor Vincent Lombardi. For the Fee Schedule Study Committee, Councilor John Tabor and Councilor Josh Denton. For the HDC, we have Councilor Richard Blaylock. The Legislative Subcommittee Assistant Mayor, Joe Kelly. Councilor John Tabor, Councilor Kate Cook. Neighborhood Steering Committee, Councilor John Tabor. Parking and Traffic Safety Committee, Councilor Andrew Bagley. The Peas Development Authority Representative Counselor Vincent Lombardi. Pierce Island Committee, Counselor Vincent Lombardi. The Planning Board, Counselor Beth Moreau. Prescott Park Master Plan Implementation Committee Assistant Mayor, Joe Kelly. The Recreation Board, one that I am going to be leaving, that I served last year, Counselor Rich Blaylock. The Rockingham Planning Commission, Counselor Beth Moreau. The Sister City Blue Ribbon Committee Assistant Mayor, Joe Kelly. Sustainable Practices Blue Ribbon Committee, Counselor Josh Denton and Counselor Kate Cook. Von Mall, Blue Ribbon Committee, Counselor Andrew Bagley. The Veterans Organization, Counselor Josh Denton. The Blue Ribbon Energy Advisory Committee, Counselor John Tabor and Counselor Kate Cook. Portsmouth Arts and Nonprofit, Counselor Kate Cook. Safe Water Advisory Group Committee, Counselor Rich Blaylock, Counselor Vince Lombardi. Public Access Financial Advisory Committee, Counselor Lombardi. And the Skateboard Park Blue Ribbon Committee, Counselor Rich Blaylock. All right. With that, we will move on to the ratifications of the Blue Ribbon Committees. And just a note, I don't think this requires a council change, but we'll be referring to the Blue Ribbon Committees as such, Blue Ribbon Committees, and not the previously phrased Mayor's Blue Ribbon Committee. That's a mouthful, and I'm not on any of them, so I appreciate the work that's going in to these. We will be ratifying the African Burying, Ground Stewardship Blue Ribbon Committee, the Citywide Neighborhood Steering Blue Ribbon Committee, Prescott Park Master Plan Implementation Committee, the Sister City Blue Ribbon Committee, the Sustainable Practices Blue Ribbon Committee, Von Mall Blue Ribbon Committee, the Blue Ribbon Energy Advisory Committee, the Portsmouth Arts and Nonprofit Safe Water Advisory Group Committee, and the Skateboard Park Blue Ribbon Committee. And with that, I've gotten through what I hope to be the most stuff they ever put on an agenda, and we will hear from Counselor Tabor and the Community Power Update.
Thanks, Your Honor. I'm going to take two or three minutes to talk about the Energy Advisory Committee and their work. I am happy to say that one of their recommendations was that the committee be renewed. We've just done that, and all of the community members are, want to continue serving, so we're off and running. Community power is the combining or aggregating of buying power of residents and businesses on the supply portion of your utility bill. If you're familiar with the bill, you know there's a supply part and there's a transmission part, which is, is and always will be, even with community power ever sourced the utility. And our Energy Advisory Committee, initiated in large part by the Sustainability Practices Committee, wanted to find out all about community power and how we can implement it here. And after a pretty detailed study, we recommended that Portsmouth should pursue community power. In the community power model, the city administers the supply, and aggregating all of our demand gives us options that are greener and potentially cheaper, and unprecedented local control of how our energy impacts our own local environment. And that's one of our major goals as an eco municipality. So when implemented, it's important to know that community power would be voluntary. A resident could opt out, a business could opt out and stay with the utility option that they've got. So it's a great opportunity. I think you'll see towns around us adopt community power plans. I know Exeter is going to vote on it in March. I think Rye is as well. And to move further down the road, the Energy Advisory Committee recommended that we join the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire, and we do so early this year, and I'll explain why. But I wanted to say to all of my fellow counselors, we'd like to do that at the February 22 meeting, bring a motion to you to join the Community Power Coalition. CPCNH, as we call it, is the partner that would provide the supply of electricity, and how to do it of community power is really to have a good partner. They have the sophistication, or are developing it, to be an energy portfolio manager, and we would be the 15th city or town in the state to join. It's run by New Hampshire communities for New Hampshire communities. It has a very flexible model. There's no cost to join, and we can withdraw at any time. And it eventually will operate as a buying cooperative, and if we join, CPCNH would be 20% of the electricity in New Hampshire, which would give us great aggregated buying power to leverage to buy solar, wind, hydropower, and give that to our citizens. So there's two other aspects. By joining the coalition, we would get a seat at the table and help CPCNH and have a voice in how it forms and how it progresses. But we'd also have the flexibility to wait and see how the supply model is developing, and that gives us flexibility. We could even watch the early adopters if we wanted to. And lastly, joining right away would support clean energy around the state and shows that we, as a city, align with clean energy advancement. So if we wait until the 22nd, that gives the staff time to evaluate the joint powers agreement and give us feedback on it, both from the legal aspects and the practical. And then I think we can have a good discussion about joining it and moving further down the road to community power.
Thank you, Counselor Tabor. Look forward to that discussion and the feedback from city staff. I think it's an exciting thing, and thank you for the work that you and the committee have put into it. Next up, I would like to suspend the rules, and I'll explain in a moment, but I'd like to suspend the rules and bring up Item D under Counselor Cook.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So I'd like to bring up Counselor Cook's to be able to discuss her sample motion, and I'll let her do that, but I thought it made sense with Counselor Denton's to have a place to send this in addition to feedback from our attorney and staff as a way to work within the Governments Committee and any charter amendments that might take place. So Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I am introducing a motion to establish a governance committee, and I'm doing so because I feel like every organization, and the city is one of them, the City Council is definitely one of them, needs to look through its rules, its ordinances, the policies that we adopt, and even our charter periodically, to make sure that we're in line with current best practice when it comes to good governance.
Counselor Cook, if I just might, could we have the motion?
Yes.
And then we'll look for a second, and then we'll allow you to speak on it.
That's fine. So I move to create a governance committee to be convened for the purpose of reviewing the city charter, council ordinances, council rules, and council policies, which will be required to report back to the City Council on committee progress and any recommended alterations to those documents. In furtherance, the governance committee shall consist of three members of the City Council appointed by the mayor with approval of the City Council. As a priority, the governance committee shall review the ethics ordinance, land use, board appointment process, and city committee structure, and any other urgent governance matter that comes to the attention of the committee or is referred by the City Council to the committee.
Second.
So I'm introducing this truly because I believe that it's time for us to look at some of our policies and ordinances. We just reviewed a few earlier tonight, and some of them are already outdated. Some of our policies refer to entities that don't even exist anymore because we haven't changed those policies over time to reflect changes in current practice at the council level. So I think it's really important that we go through all of our rules and policies periodically and just make sure that we're in line with our current practice as a council, and that we're up to date on where we should be in our governance practices.
Counselor Denton?
Thank you, Your Honor. I wholeheartedly support this. Charter amendments are just a portion of this, so very appropriately speaking to the proposed motion which I had now makes total sense. For those who don't have it in front of you, my motion was essentially for a report back from the city attorney on two proposed charter amendment subjects, that, one being moving the actual date that city councillors are sworn in, from the current date, I think it's January 3, to sometime in November. My bet is they come back around November 17. And then the other one, there are actually three things which I'd want to be considered, all regarding the makeup of the city council, how it's elected, because these topics have come up time and time again, every time I've run since 2013. One being ward voting, and there's two ways to do this. There's the, I'll say, the conquered model, where if they had five wards, they had five ward-specific members, and then they had four members at large, and the member at large got the most votes, became mayor. And then the other one would be the Dover model, which, if they had five wards, it was five ward-specific city councillors, then three at-large city councillors, and then the mayor was directly elected. So the three things which I recommended, but the way I wrote it was "and," so it would be the, a proposed charter amendment to include changing the date or the day that we would take office, and then the other three would be "or," because you can't have conflicting charter amendments on the ballot. It can't be all three. We would have to pick, and the reason why I wanted the report back was to see at what point we'd have to pick. The last time a charter amendment passed was in 2019. It was one which I had put forward, and it's a lengthy process. It involves a report back to the Secretary of State. It will involve a public hearing, and I just don't know how we could have multiple things, at what point we would have to decide. So one thing I do ask from Counselor Cook to consider is, instead of having a wholesale, hey, public, here you go at the next municipal election, is a charter amendment with all the changes in one, instead, break it up as much as possible. None of these could conflict, where one item could be changing the date that councillors are sworn in. Another item could be ward-specific voting, but what I would hate to see is include, let's say, ward-specific voting in one big amendment that has all these great things, and have it go down because people just don't want ward-specific voting. So consider having multiple charter amendments. If that's what the committee finds, would be helpful, and that way it could be, none of them would be conflicting, but the public could pick and choose versus, hey, it's either, here's a bunch of great ideas, but a lot of people would just vote based on that one item.
Thank you, Counselor Denton. And our, Counsel Moreau?
I commend you, Counselor Cook, for bringing this forward. I think it's a really good idea. I've sat on governance committees for other organizations I've volunteered for, and it's something you should actually do on almost a biannual basis to take a look at everything and make sure everything's current and up to date. And I think the past in the city has proven that we aren't probably completely up to date, so it's very timely, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Counselor Tabor?
I think this is really getting right into the heart of some important business early in our term. That's great. Could you just clarify for me, Counselor Cook? Do you see this as a permanent subcommittee of the council? Or is this a one-time thing that we're going to do a review of the charter now?
In conferring with our legal counsel, I set this up this way because this just sets up the committee for this council. If the committee is successful, if we feel like we like this format and it's working well for this council, then we can always bring up another vote to make it a more permanent committee, but as it stands, it would be a committee that runs for the term of this council.
Thank you.
Counselor Blaylock?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I'd like to thank Counselor Cook for bringing this up as well. I think this just adds transparency. It adds nothing but value to the way we govern this city, and I think it has a lot of value to how that is done and shows the citizens that we truly are being transparent.
Thank you. Counsel Blaylock? Any other comments? Any questions? I will have one. I will pass the gavel here. It's really excited, Counselor Cook, that you're bringing this forward. Really excited, the thought that you've already put into crafting this motion and the work you will undoubtedly do. Since I get to choose, you'll certainly be on it. It's, we had the opportunity every 10 years to review the charter. Given COVID, given everything that was going on last council term, we did not actually do that, so that's a way to get that work done. The other, and the reason why I asked to have this brought up before Counselor Denton's, and by no means do I think that we wouldn't get a response from the city attorney as well, but I would like to help prioritize some of the things, and I think some of the potential charter amendments, and I share Counselor Denton's concern around, you know, one thing maybe would be not supported by the public could, you know, spoil other things. But I'd like to get a holistic view of the charter. But I'd like to get a holistic view of the charter in conjunction with what we will touch on shortly with Counselor Denton. So I appreciate the work that you've done. I will support this and look forward to the work that will go into this, helping make our government just a little bit better.
Your Honor, Counselor Bagley has his hand raised.
That would be, I'll take the gavel back, you know. Counselor Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a question, as we're having this stuff heard to me. This governance committee, should it include the city manager and the city attorney? Or does, the way this motion is written, does it preclude them from adding their insight?
I can ask the city attorney. I don't believe that it precludes their insight, given that they're both--
Your Honor, the committee would actually not include the city manager or the city attorney. However, I would expect to advise the committee, and by charter, the city manager has the right to involve herself in any matter under discussion by the city council, so she can--
The other way to say this, we'd be happy to help and be a resource.
All right.
Thank you.
Counselor Bagley, does that answer your question?
Yes. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? No? With that, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Great. I just have it. So going back now to Counselor Denton, please, you have the floor.
I'm good with the motion that passed.
So the motion that passed was to create the, establish the sample motion. Do we need a further sample motion to refer this, your charter amendments item to both this committee and legal for a report back on timing?
I can make that motion. So I move for the newly formed governance committee to report back on the process of, let me think this one through. Mr. City Attorney, would it make sense to you to have you report to the governance committee on the process of a charter amendment, or do you think it would make sense for the committee to report back to the council on the process?
The process itself's relatively black-and-white document. Whether or not the amendments are a good idea or not, or good policy or not, that's the more complicated question, and I would suggest that I can write just a general memorandum on the process for everybody, and then the governance committee can tell you whether they think it's a good idea or not.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, well, that puts us through our city council members. Next up is approvals of grants and donations. Sample motion, move to approve and accept the grant for the police department from the U.S. Department of Justice as presented, which is $418,549.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We also have acceptance of donations to the police department from the Sadele family of $300 and a $10 gift card from the Rollins family, donation of various gift cards from anonymous citizens. A sample motion, move to approve and accept the donations for the police department as presented.
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, our acceptance of donations to the Portsmouth 400. That's in preparation for the celebration of our 400th anniversary. Robert Bearfield of $1 and Denise Polis of $1,000. Sample motion, move to approve and accept the donations as presented.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, acceptance of donation to the fire department from Paul Gormly and Kimi Uguchi for $2,500. Sample motion, move to approve and accept the donation for the fire department as presented.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is our city manager, Karen Conard, who is doing double duty. My chair broke, and she gave me her chair, and so hopefully she's able to get through this easily tonight.
Happy to do so. So first up, your mayor, first up, mayor, is, there we go, a ratification of release of trust funds for the acquisition of the community campus property. Before you tonight, you have both the memorandum from the city attorney, as well as a letter from the Attorney General's Director of Charitable Trusts. Essentially, what the trustees of the trust funds are looking for is a motion from the council to ratify the council vote taken by the previous council back on December 20th of 2021, and this motion would contain express language authorizing the dispersment of the requested funds, which would be part of the acquisition. And the city attorney certainly could speak to this if there are any follow-up questions.
Could we have that? Somebody move the motion?
So moved. Second.
The city attorney?
Your Honor, this is another belt of suspenders thing you discussed earlier. It's a vote which is already taken by prior council, but trustees are looking for some further assurances as a result of a public hearing or a public comment that they received. So the simple way, a simple way to do it, Your Honor, would be to just move the motion as presented in the report from the city manager.
Any other questions, comments on this?
Your Honor?
Counselor Bagley?
Yeah, just because we're crossing the Ts, dotting the Is on this, can I request a roll call vote?
Any other questions on this? Now, for the roll call, I'm happy that we can ratify the vote that Counselor Taber and I previously took on this. This community campus is going to be a big deal for the city. We're going to be very much involved in the council as we, as a community, to decide on this, so I'm happy to bring this back forward and look forward to roll call vote and support.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Taber?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counsel Lombardi?
Yes.
Counsel Blaylock?
Yes.
Counsel Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCaffrey?
Yes.
Ms. unanimous.
Thanks very much. Up next would be a license extension for 60 Penn Hallow Street, and I'll mention at the outset that Lynn Kramer from McNabb Properties is here to speak directly to any questions that the council may have. But let me just provide a bit of a summary from where we've been and where we are to date. The developer has requested an extension of an existing license agreement to facilitate ongoing construction work at 60 Penn Hallow Street, and so in your packet is an updated construction schedule. If granted, this would be the third and hopefully final extension of said license that needs to be in place. In addition, there is background on the project and the history of the licenses that have been granted from Assistant Staff Attorney Jane Farini. And I know that there have been ongoing concerns from abutters about the project impacts throughout the duration of the project. City staff have met recently with Lynn and her team, and the city has been represented by multiple departments, some of whom are in the room tonight, and our deputy city manager, deputy city attorney Suzanne Woodland, and our chief building inspector, Shanti Wolf. He is available on Zoom as well, as is our director of public works in the room, Peter Rice. And we've also had representatives from legal and planning in on these conversations. And as a result of these meetings, several upcoming coordination issues were identified and resolved. There will, for example, be close coordination between DPW, the local utilities, and the contractors. We have a lot of work to do in that area, as you can imagine. So essentially, the request for extension for, hopefully, the last time, will involve the closure of 1,740 square feet of sidewalk along Daniel and Penn Hallow, and the use of three parking spaces on Penn Hallow from February 1st, 2022, through July 3rd of 2022. Their request also includes the use of three parking spaces along Daniel Street from April 1st of 2022 through July 3rd of 2022. Please note that the license term of use for all of these parking spaces is for weekday use only. They would be made available for the public to park from 2:00 p.m. on Friday through Sunday evening. The total license fee is $39,561 for this third extension, and I'd be happy to answer any questions from the variety of staff that are here tonight.
Are there any questions? Counsel Lombardi?
In reading through this, there seemed to be, it sounded to me like there was an issue about communicating with the abutters and that they, the applicant has agreed to be more consistent about it. Is that true? I mean, was the, was there a problem with that at first?
Well, I can tell you that the way to, the best way to answer that will be to ask Suzanne to come up, but while she is coming up, to say that this has been a very intrusive project in a small downtown area, and I think everybody knew going into the approval and permitting of a project of this nature that is built to the sidewalk, that we would have questions and concerns, and there would be multiple abutters who may be impacted. I can say, in speaking for one abutter, before I turn things over to Suzanne, that I heard from Massimo Morja over the weekend, who proactively reached out to me and said that Lynn and her team have been as good as can be considering the circumstances, and that the developer has been responsive as issues arise, because they do, and they, that's been the case all along, and he anticipates that they will continue to be responsive. So if I might, Mr. Mayor, I would turn it over to Suzanne.
Suzanne?
Yeah. So at the beginning of this project, as is common with all of our large projects downtown, we did enter into a, what we call a construction management mitigation plan, which tries to set up some of these non-licensed processes to help projects like this go better, and that includes working with the developer and setting some goals in terms of communicating with the abutters and kind of talking initially about the schedule, the flow and phasing of work, and some of these parking issues, and, you know, you're not supposed to be working before 7:00 a.m. So we try and go over all of that and document that in a separate document called the construction management mitigation plan, and there was a schedule set up for regular communications with abutters because, you know, as everyone knows who's been doing any kind of construction around here, it has been a challenging couple of years to do construction projects because of supply issues and all of those pieces. So what we found, though, is that the communications, at least of late, were not maybe as useful in terms of timing for the abutters to really understand what was going on. So we met with Lynn Kramer from McNabb Properties to talk about the level of communication, so it was more, I think we're looking for more substance, and that's what we have asked for, and Lynn can certainly speak on behalf of the developer, but we did ask for more substance, because while the emails were going out, we felt that they just weren't conveying enough information. The other thing we tried to do with this license is to just decide that since there are going to be impacts on those parking spaces along Daniel and Penn Hallow, make the developer pay for them. Let's just agree that they're going to be impacted for a certain period of time, so that part of the, sometimes the communication piece is, oh, we need them one day, but then we don't need them the next. And it's sometimes harder for businesses and people on the street to say, it's happening Monday, but not Wednesday. So we thought, you know what, let's just sort of look at the realities of this, recognize the impact, and try and communicate clearly on that. And so that's why you see in this license agreement, there's a bit of phasing in terms of which parking spaces are going to be impacted. Now, we are asking for as many, kind of the smaller deliveries that can be done inside to be done inside, but again, recognizing there's stuff that's going to come at the front of the building, and let's just make our clear schedule for it, communicate clearly on it. And so that's one of the things we've kind of asked them to do, to try and make this easier. We'll also say that originally, the developer came to us and said, oh, I think we'll be done by beginning of June, and we said, you know what, don't come here for another license agreement. So we've got this to a date that's before July 1st, but I can tell you that they are pushing hard, and, you know, I'm really hoping it's going to be sooner than that July date. And I'll stop there, and if you want to hear from the developer, you're welcome to do so, obviously.
Are there any questions for Suzanne before she steps away? I have one.
Your Honor, I have--
Oh, sorry, Counselor Bagley. Is this for Suzanne?
Thank you, Your Honor. No, this is just in general to the project.
All right, continue.
So I did speak with Massimo as well, but as some of you may know, that's one of my favorite restaurants in town, and I think they did a really fantastic job through the pandemic with the outdoor dining. He, his response to me is, you know, obviously with a project of this size, there's going to be a lot of issues and complaints, but that Lynn and Jim have been reasonably responsive and done a good job addressing those complaints as best as they can, and he feels that, you know, they're in general good neighbors, and understanding that, you know, it's a challenging situation for everyone. One thing he did request from them, and is written in the packet and the application, but I just wanted to bring up and highlight, is that the restaurants on that street would continue to be able to do outdoor dining if we choose to approve outdoor dining again for 2022, and spoiler alert, I believe that will probably be on one of these upcoming agendas that we get moving on that agenda item. So I just want to say that if there's any residents out there listening to this that continue to have concerns, feel free to contact myself or any of the other counselors. And then a comment for the city would be on the Fleet Street extension. We have a barcode you can scan and fill out a survey. Is it, would it be a good idea for projects of this magnitude to maybe put a barcode poster up where they can sign up, residents or interested parties or businesses could easily sign up to get notified when things like this happens? Just because, you know, sometimes emails don't get to the right place, or notices aren't always posted to the, you know, all the interested parties. So if we had a visible poster on one of the fences there, and you could sign up from scanning that barcode to receive alerts about the project, that may be helpful for this project and for other future large-scale projects like this. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Counselor Bagley. Counsel Moreau?
My question was actually answered. I was curious as to whether or not they were going to push to be done by the beginning of June.
Thank you, Counsel Moreau. Any other questions?
Your Honor.
Counsel Taber?
When the initial permit was given, some of the businesses abutting this had conflicts with their suppliers, bringing, you know, doing load-ins for them. Have we encountered any of that? Have we resolved that?
So the developer might be able to speak, or, you know, representative might be able to speak better to that. I can tell you the couple of times that I was down there when some of the steel was coming in, it was very difficult because the road did get closed, there were flaggers there as steel was coming in. Unfortunately, it's a very tight site, but I'd rather have the developer speak to that, but I can say, yes, it was difficult. I think we are past the worst of it, but again, I'd let the developers' representative speak to that. But there is no making it pretty, that it was a tough site down there, and I certainly was down there at times eating at Siri Street Bakery, at times watching the crane in the street picking and bringing stuff in, and, you know, if you like to watch construction, it was okay.
We'd have to suspend the rules.
Yeah, let's suspend the rules.
Your Honor, I move we suspend the rules to talk to the developer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman. My name is Lynn Kramer with McNabb Properties, and with regards to your question about the loading zone, we have taken, or tried to take that into account on a pretty regular basis. If we feel that the work that we're doing is going to impact the present loading zone, we've been very consistent at trying to reserve three parking spaces across the federal building, whatever the name of that building is. I apologize for not knowing, but with the intent of--
We're second.
--with the intent of putting an alternate loading zone in during the times that it is busy, so that, you know, the loading for the neighbors and the immediate people in the area gets out of the way of the construction, but doesn't impede the deliveries. So that's something that we will continue to do if it happens. The-- that we will continue to do if it happens. The flaggers slash police, we typically go with the police detail, have been great in making sure that the people pull into the Federal Reserve area. They have the parking there. They do their loading, unloading, and move right on. So we have been trying to address that, and it's been pretty successful for the past, I would say, six to eight months.
And if there's more questions, I have one. But first, we need an actual motion on the floor so we can have this discussion. So there's a sample motion. I wait to hear that.
I'll make motion move. Sample motion.
Second.
Second. Okay. So there are other questions for Lynn? I, I guess I have one. And thank you for spending the time with us this evening. Part of the, the difficulty of this project and the coming back before the council is that this is now the third extension. Could you speak to why, and I don't mean to, this, this question to sound at all patronizing in any way, but how is this, this extension different than the previous extensions that have been offered for this project?
Well, this is a fairly large job, and it's a two-year job. And I think that through the past extensions, we really have been granted extensions in approximately six-month increments. So we knew that we were going to have to come back. And I think it was my understanding, and I'm not sure if this is an accurate assessment, was that they wanted the council to review and make sure that we were, one, of holding the commitments and agreements that we had committed to, and, two, to make sure that if we weren't or if something wasn't functioning properly, that changes could be made. So yes, this is the third time. But it's because we couldn't get a two-year license agreement without somebody having a check and a balance in place. So I think that is probably, at least that's my understanding of why it's coming back at the duration it is. I do want to make sure that everybody understands this is a July 3rd up to July 3rd extension. Somebody had said that we were trying to get done by June 1st. I think that the extension takes us to July 3rd, just before the July 4th. So I just didn't want a miscommunication or misunderstanding on that. But that is what we're trying to do with the intent that if we can turn over some of the sidewalks sooner. I know that Peter Rice has requested that possibly Daniel Street come onboard sooner, possibly as soon as we can, as close to Memorial Day. I can't make that commitment, but I understand his requirement and his, his request. We are going to do everything we can to try to meet that. I do know that the squeeze on that is the utility work in Daniel Street has a very limited time span. I think we start at April 1st, and we finish at the end of May before Memorial Day, which if that runs into hiccups, it could push the sidewalks a little bit longer. So I just wanted to kind of make sure everybody understands we are looking at the big picture. We do know that you want to get things back and turned over. Trust me, it's our intent to try to do that as quick as we can.
Thank you, and I appreciate that answer. And just a, a quick follow-up on that. We want it done as, as fast as it can happen. We don't want it done, you know, faster than it's able to happen.
Correct.
And we want it to be done well. I think when it comes to the abutters, and, and I have some questions for Suzanne as well on this, sharing the information, you know, I, I guess I have the philosophy, you know, the quicker I get bad news, the better it is in terms of being able to plan for my day and understand. So I think that there's agreement that we want it done quickly. But to the best of your knowledge, is the July 3rd date a reasonable expectation of when this job will be completed from a?
Oh, no. I do not believe it will be when it's completed. It is when, I think if you look at the schedule, we actually show the completion date, taking out, so probably August. I think we turn over certain things. But this is when we would be looking to turn over the sidewalks, the, the streets and things of that nature. I do believe that there will be some interior fit-out work happening. You've got some, as Suzanne had said through this pandemic, we've got some delivery issues and things of this nature. But what I think we're trying to do is make the commitment that we're looking for our first tenant to move in the beginning of June, which would mean that the sidewalks, the facade of the building, and the things that would impact the town and the neighborhood would be complete to that point.
Okay. Yes, and that's a clarification. I meant.
Yep. No, I just want to make sure that we're clear. So,
Yeah.
Because there's no way I'm going to have the entire inside complete by June 1.
And then just one final question, and there might be other questions from the council. How would you describe this phase of, of work compared to earlier phases of work that required, you know, thinking of the, the steel lay down, et cetera? Could you speak at all to that and how this is or is not different from the burden on the, those, those streets?
I personally think that the next phase that we're coming into, or this next grouping, the next couple of months, is going to be less impactful, excuse me, either shy of potentially the utility work in Daniel Street. But if we have made it through the blasting, the concrete placements, the hundreds of concrete trucks coming in, and crane and steel and steel, we are really close to really minimizing the impact. Now, is it going to be perfect? No. But, you know, we, we do have facade work that needs to be done. We have skin that needs to be put on. We have windows that need to be put on. Our intent is to enclose this building as quick as we can and get the work inside. I personally think it's less impactful. It's an interesting dynamic because it seems like the communication you guys have been talking about, it's dynamic, you know. I, I will not deny that we need to step up, okay? But the dynamic part of this communication is that the project itself is evolving. So when the communication started, it was about, what street are you closing down? How long are you closing it down? What parking are you taking? Now the dynamic is, what are you doing in the building? Why do you have a lift? What is that lift working on? Why are you doing this? What are you doing that for? What's being delivered? You know, it's, it's, it's more, I don't know if it's interest, if it's concern, I am not sure, but it's a dynamic process. So I've listened to a lot of the input that Suzanne and the team have given me. We will step up and try to be more, I don't want to say insightful, but more descriptive in trying to, I don't want to use the word educate, but inform our neighbors as to what is happening. You know, we're not trying to hide anything. But, you know, I do think that once we get inside the building, it will be much more, less, much more contained and less disruptive to them. However, keep in mind, we still have a skin to put on the building. We still have copper. We still have lots of little gingerbread stuff. And that's not going to go away until it's done.
Well, thank you, Lynn. I think that when it comes to the, the changing dynamic and changing what you're trying to keep abreast, it was probably simpler to state when streets were closing, parking spaces, this is happening, your deliveries will be shifted around. I think it's evolved. The conversations I've had is, there was something that was unexpectedly loud at a time when a business, you know, could not plan for that on the exterior, or something that,
Yeah.
I understand that we're asking you to move as quickly as possible. And we're also asking you to let everybody know around you, as much as possible, what's happening. And those are somewhat in conflict. But I, but I believe that the communication, I'll ask, these are questions, there's Suzanne, but the process we put in place to give the abutters as much notices as it's possible to give will help this last phase of the project get done, which we all, you know, look forward to welcoming this, this project online.
Excellent.
Other questions for Lynn?
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I had one question for Suzanne. And maybe a question for Peter. And we were going so quickly through this agenda. I'm sorry for getting us stuck here. The, the question for you, Suzanne, is what is our communication side from, can you speak at all to the communication that we've put in place in, in terms of the city? Because this is a, you know, it's a developer-led process, but we also have, you know, I guess, responsibility from a communications standpoint for alerting the things that we can control. How are we changing our end in terms of engagement and communication for city-led initiatives? An example would be if somebody has a question on what's going on, and it turns out it's a city issue, that it's, you know, not at fault, but is responsible for that. How are we looking to address that?
Sure. Let me say, historically, we put the burden on the developers to kind of update the abutters in terms of their schedule because they know it, and it's, we've pushed that onto them. Now, to the extent we learn that there are, well, let me back up. We also will, from time to time, ask the developer to convene a meeting with the abutters. Used to be a physical meeting. And we would usually send a staff member on, you know, to be on site, whether it's someone from the inspections department, or someone from planning, or legal, to kind of hear from the abutters at those meetings. And so there have been a couple of those meetings for this project. In terms of, if we get a complaint, because sometimes we'll get, the police department will get calls, or we'll get a call through the city manager's office, then we'll usually do some investigation. So that's when we'll reach out, find out what's been happening on the site. Depending on what the issue is, we would send, you know, Jason Page down, or someone from the inspections department down, or someone from Parking Enforcement down. And then we get back to the abutter who had the interest and kind of give the report back in terms of what we found. Were they compliant? Were they not? Did we sanction them? Did we, you know, we've done a lot of ticketing of people who are parking subcontractors who are parking where they shouldn't be. And, you know, they should be parking in the building or not on the streets in that area. So they get ticketed, or we move them along, depending on, you know, what the issue is and where they are. So that's been the method so far. I did find it interesting, the, the thought about having them put up a QR code to get up-to-date information on the project, or being on an email list. I thought that was an interesting idea. So that's something we can certainly consider whether to build into the CMMPs in the future, a better communication tool.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add to that, our Public Information Officer reminds us that any question, whether it be to this particular project or a project in general, any question that is emailed to hotline@cityofportsmith.com, either gets answered directly or gets referred to the appropriate person and then answered. So just want to remind folks of that option as well.
Hotline@cityofportsmith.com.
That's right.
Sounds, that sounds like a great request line there. Other questions from the council to Suzanne? I have one final one, and maybe this is to Peter. We saw in the CIP discussion on Daniel Street, can we have an understanding of when that project is going to be completed? Because, and I'll flush this out as you're walking up, if it's, this work will start once, or our work will start once this work ends, I'd like to set that expectation with the abutters, but just speaking in the work with, with Daniel Street, when we think that?
So I'm not quite clear on the work you're referring to. What we, there was, in the CIP, there was reference to potentially bearing utilities, which was anticipated to be done in conjunction with the McIntyre development. The, the project that Lynn's speaking to has initiated and completed, is completing the first section of that effort to provide electrical service to their property. And the, the utility work that we're going to be doing on Daniel Street is actually the work that, that Lynn's group is, is doing. It's a drainage, section of drainage line up to Market Square, as well as some buried electrical utility to provide service. Because currently, there's still a section of overhead that runs down from Penn Hollow to, to just before Mo's, and it cuts over, and it actually supplies power over to G. Wilikers in there. So that's going to be buried as part of their work. Daniel Street, I'm, I'm not sure which.
So that's, I, I guess that's the, the question that I have. So ultimately, the encumbrance to the abutters will end based on this, and by encumbrance, I don't mean noise, but I mean,
The, the.
In terms of the sidewalk encumbrance will end based on this expectation and this agreement by July 3rd.
And as Lynn said, I've, I've been leaning on them to, to get it done as much as possible before Memorial Day and, and pull it back into the sidewalk. They need the sidewalks to get the facade done. And their, their plan is to get that sidewalk back to us by, by that July date. So I don't anticipate that not being done. I mean, they've, they've been very good at responding to, you know, our requests. You know, I anticipate, you know, they're just as anxious to get that back to us as, as we are to get, you know, to get it back. So.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Well, I'll stop asking mine. All right, we have a motion on the floor to move to finalize and execute the temporary construction license for the term of February 1st, 2022, July 3rd, 2022.
So moved.
Oh, no. We have that.
We are.
Okay, second. No, it's already on the floor. I was just rereading the, so we'll take that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Lynn. Moving on to item number three would be a request for the expansion of the West End Economic Revitalization Zone, and I'll refer to that as ERZ moving forward. So what we are looking for tonight is a request of the council to approve an application to the New Hampshire Business and Economic Affairs Office to expand the existing West End ERZ. And if I get a motion, maybe it makes sense to discuss at that time.
So moved.
Thank you. So the ERZ designation is a tool allowed by state statute that creates incentives for companies to expand or relocate to eligible areas. I can't stress enough that this is a state incentive. There's, as I put it to the mayor, there's no skin off the city's nose. It behooves companies in those existing areas to make an application to the state to be considered for the tax credits that are involved. And those are tax credits to be used against the business profit tax and the business enterprise tax up to a maximum of $40,000 annually for a five-year period. We have five ERZs that are active in Portsmouth. And the request here tonight is to expand one of the last ones that was created and approved back in 2018, to not only move and expand into the West End Yards project, but it also takes into account, as the map in your packet would suggest, the area not only along Kate Street and Hodgson Way, but the area inclusive of the property that abuts West End Yards and the rail line opposite the Plaza 800, or essentially the, as you're heading out of town on Islington, everything to the right. So the Button Factory and, and the properties on the right side of the street. So the EDC is, the Economic Development Commission took this up and unanimously approved the proposed West End expansion. I believe it was at their December meeting, if not November. I can tell you that Nancy Karma, our Economic Development Manager, is, is on Zoom if we have questions. And interestingly, we reached out to the commercial broker who is working with West End Yards to fill the space. I can share with you that she shared with us that there are a few office tenants in the preliminary stages right now that may be able to take advantage of these tax incentives. There is 22,000 square foot of office space on the second floor at that complex. So depending on how the interests were to play out with the companies, there may be as many as 80 to 100 employees full-time on that second floor of the building. And, and those companies may be eligible. But again, those are companies that make an application to the state. In addition, there is also 30,000 square foot of retail space. And the commercial broker is in conversations with some restaurants and other retail users. And what would play, what would come into play there is how many of their employees are full-time versus part-time. And lastly, strangely, coincidentally, today, we got a request from a company. And the best way I can explain what they do is that they're a venture-backed tech startup funded by a high-profile technology executive in New Hampshire. And the, the company's medium-to-long-term plan would be to employ hundreds, with an S on the end, of skilled manufacturing, engineering, sales, and marketing folks. And they're located within the, the boundaries of the new, of the expanded ERZ, if you will. So it's really interesting that that request came in today. The, the point-blank question to Nancy Karma was, is expanding the existing West End ERZ to include certain buildings on Islington Street, something that could be proposed or even discussed. So interesting timing that it is coming up for discussion tonight. So. timing that it is coming up for discussion tonight. So happy to answer any questions or bring Nancy to video.
Any questions? No?
Your Honor.
Oh, Counselor Bagley, and then Counselor Kaver.
Yeah, just very quickly, more of a comment with a question behind it is, it sounds like by expanding this zone, we're bringing more and additional high-quality jobs to the Portsmouth area. The comment I'd have, maybe this Carmer could answer, is, you know, at least pre-COVID, if you live somewhere like West End Yards, you know, you went to your job, and you had lunch wherever your job was located. If we have all these employees working in the area, that should, I would assume, have a positive impact on the restaurants and retailers in that immediate area, as people, you know, go to the gym in the morning, or go to get lunch in the afternoon, or go out to dinner, you know, after their shift is over, if you will. Is that kind of one of the benefits that we look towards with this?
Yes, that's exactly. You should, you should go on the road and sell this incentive, because that's exactly what it is. And the residential that is included in the zone, technically, it's only the commercial and the mixed use that is there. It's not residential. That, so the developer of the, can't get any credit for any of the residential properties there, even the residential real estate people. But for the commercial, it's absolutely those direct and indirect impacts, where they could walk to their job, if they were in that 22,000 square foot second floor office space we're talking about, on the Lafayette roadside. And then, more importantly, across the street on Borthwick Avenue, you know, the hospital, and Liberty, and Northeast Credit, those businesses as well. So I think having the mixed use, having the residential there is really important to supporting those retail and residential, and the retail and other commercial businesses there.
Thank you.
Any other questions, the council? Counselor Boylock?
Are there any possible negatives to this? I don't see any. I was just curious if there are any verifications or any cost to this. I don't see any.
I don't think that there are any negative impacts to it. I mean, really, what this is designed to do is, you know, to prevent sprawl. You're in an area where it's an incentive for companies to move here. I guess the only downside I see is that there's something like 271 of these zones, you know. So by not doing this, we're not as competitive as some of our neighboring communities.
Thank you.
So just on that, could we, this came through the EDC. Nancy, is there a way that we could, it's not a downside, but I just want to make sure, you know, if you're a larger company thinking about moving here, you have a team of lawyers that typically look through opportunities like this to take advantage of, is there a way that we can make sure that local businesses that might be earlier in their phase of growth, that are looking to grow and expand in Portsmouth, are being made aware of this as well?
Yeah, and we do that in a couple of ways. We typically do a press release when a zone like this is approved. We put it on our website. We do reach out one-on-one to companies that we are aware of. So I think one thing that we could do, that I've seen done in other communities, is signage that's put, that is put up that says you are entering an economic revitalization zone, and then put a QR code or something on it or website so that people can learn more about what it is. So I do think we could do a little better outreach than we're doing right now, and I'm open to suggestions from other mechanisms as well.
Thank you. All right, well, we have a motion on the floor. If there's no other questions, the sample motion again is to move and approve the proposed expansion of the West End ERZ and send a letter requesting the expansion to the New Hampshire Business and Economic Affairs Office.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the last one.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Nancy. The fourth item of four would be a request from the city clerk, no less. It is regarding proposed redistricting, and this really speaks to balancing out the voters within wards. And so this is a request to move a small number of census blocks from Ward 2 into Ward 5. And Kelly, do you want to speak to this at all any further?
It's outlined in the memorandum that we're basically relocating 131 people from Ward 2 into Ward 5. That doesn't mean the number of voters, it just means the number of people per population. There's a small section outlined in your map that is attached to the request in blue, highlighted in blue, that outlines that for you. And if you have any questions, we did a thorough review of this with Senator Gray, as well as GIS manager Jamie McCarty, to determine the most appropriate change that would be necessary to meet the requirements for the redistricting. And the next step is, if it's approved by the council, we would submit the textual summary of the ward boundaries in order for the drafting of a bill to enact the new ward lines. And if the law is adopted, then the change to the ward map would be made, and effective voters will receive notification that they will now be voting in Ward 5 at the Little Harbor School.
I have a question.
Okay, we get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Thank you.
Have the people in that, that are, or who are being affected by this, been notified of this?
No, they don't get notified until after it's approved, because it's not necessary to let them know, because it might not be approved. It has to go through a session law change. So we don't want to advise people that we're going to make a change and then not make it.
Okay. Counselor Bagley?
It looks to be frozen.
Counselor Bagley, you're frozen.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, you guys froze as well. People are coming home from work, so I guess it's gotten a little slower. I have a question. I noticed on the map where I used to live on Miller Avenue is now switching from Ward 2 to Ward 5. And I guess my question or comment would be, is, you know, it's fairly emotional where you vote, you know, going to the middle school versus going to Little Harbor. So I guess, is there a way we can kind of soften the blow a little bit when we tell people that they now have to vote in a new place? Is there, is there any good way to do that?
I think Counselor Bagley has offered to knock on every door himself.
You know, we will be as kind and as gentle as we can in the letter that we give to them, put the information out on the news, on the website, in the newsletter. Everybody will get a letter. We certainly understand that this is an item that is a concern for some people that would be affected. It is a small section. It's three census blocks. And, you know, it's a request that has been made by the state. Redistricting is always something that we look at every 10 years, and it's based on population numbers versus voters. So I hope that addresses your question.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, we have a, Counselor Murrow?
On the flip side, maybe they'll be excited to be moving to Ward 5, you know. I heard there was big parties going on there during voting this passball, so.
Certainly suck it out. Counselor Cook?
It really comes down to the bake sale.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask if we know this absolutely doesn't impact any of our current, currently elected officials, ward officials? Do we know that none of them live in that zone?
So we did a review of that. I did a review of that, and it doesn't look like it's affecting anybody currently. Not to say that it couldn't, at some point, you know, a new official that, you know, used to be in Ward 2 would be in Ward 5 now, but currently it doesn't have an impact on them.
If I could just add, redistricting is often in the press with negative connotations of, you know, politicians picking their voters. This is exactly the opposite. This is a professional city staff going through identifying a need to balance out our wards, doing so with the utmost care and professionalism in order to provide, you know, what the state requires of us. You know, it is redistricting, but sometimes that is a loaded term that can imply something that is not. This is a requirement, and I thank Kelly for going through the effort, as much as researching to make sure that folks that do represent those wards are not going to be redistricted out of the wards that they represent. So with that, I will, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next up, I've been waiting to say this, we have the consent agenda. The proper motion for adoption would be a motion to move to adopt the consent agenda.
Your Honor, I'm actually going to make a different motion, and I'll explain why in a moment. It will be to remove item B from the consent agenda. If there's a second, I'll explain.
Second.
So, as maybe you know, I'm the commander of the VFW. VFW Post 168 pays Portsmouth Little League for, to have a Little League team in our name. So if I were to vote for item B, it could be viewed as a conflict of interest, because I'd be voting to promote something which is promoting an organization which I am the commander of. So if we remove this from the consent agenda, we could then vote on items A, C, and D on the consent agenda. I could then refuse myself, step aside, and then we could vote on item B, or you could vote on item B.
Okay. I'll look for a motion to approve A, C, and D of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And look for a motion to approve Section B of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
I just want to make, I have to abstain from that vote as well, as a volunteer for the Little League.
I don't know if you get any physi, or any benefit from that.
No, I don't.
But it will be noted that there were seven.
I don't. Only loss of time. Bad bet.
So finally, we have the presentation and consideration of written communications and petitions, email correspondence. A sample motion would be to move to accept and place on file.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then finally, a letter from Sean Menard from Seacoast Eat Local regarding new management of the Portsmouth Farmers Market. A sample motion would be moved to refer to the legal department for a report back.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
City manager, any informational items?
None at this meeting, Mayor.
And then finally, under miscellaneous business, including business remaining unfinished at the previous meeting, the citywide neighborhood committee biannual report, which is in our packet, is for informational only. They have been reestablished. And is there anything else under miscellaneous? With that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much, Portsmouth. Good night.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
You did a great job. Look at us, we did it.